All right, are we alive? All right, we will open this meeting at 6:32 August 21st as per usual with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dave Hemmely, Chair of the Select Board.
Normandy Blake, Select President.
Marla Herrick.
So that brings us to our announcements. Do we have specific announcements?
The only announcement that I have is the next Select Board meeting, rather than having it on Labor Day, will be on Tuesday, September 5th.
Oh, why can't we have it on Monday?
Well, you could, of course.
Okay, September 5th. Yeah, that makes sense. I don't want to do that, so I don't forget. I would when I tried to show up on Monday, but... Do we have any other specific announcements?
I don't, no.
All right. In that case, I will simply say thank you to everybody that showed up to Old Home Day. It was very well attended and I think everybody enjoyed it and had a great time. And with that, let's go ahead and, unless you've got announcements?
I do have. I have to say, I think it's the first time two selectmen walked in the parade.
Well, I know. Somebody did send Marla the memo, so...
There wasn't one, I just showed up.
He was walking and he saw me.
I heard. I showed up a little later, yes.
And the other thing is there is a public supper roast beef on, this is coming Saturday, 26th.
Here?
Yeah, 4:30 to 6:30.
And there are signs for that right up front.
Yep.
So, any other announcements?
No, I'll be quiet.
All right, that moves us on to our appointments. So that would be Warren Hemmely for the Pond Hill Culvert. So come on down.
Thank you. Where would you like me to be?
Right over here is fine. Just have a seat and look. And I apologize, we don't have mics out, but most people don't need them in order to hear. If you do, please let us know. We'll happily grab them and turn on the audio system. All of the recording will pick everything up even without them.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to sit before you tonight and bring this matter, which is of concern to us, to discuss the replacement of the Pond Hill Road Culvert at the outlet end of Lake Winterpocket. I'm Warren Hemmely. My wife Julia and I own a seasonal camp on the shore of Lake Winterpocket, 95 Lake Road. We've owned that for 28 years and we love it. I'm the current president of the Lake Winterpocket Conservation Association and I'm here as spokesperson for my organization. So the views I express tonight reflect the unanimous feeling of all those in attendance at our annual meeting, which was July 8th. And it is that membership's urging that I'm here tonight. First of all, I want to give a short thumbnail of Lake Winterpocket Conservation Association. You may have heard of it, maybe you know all about it, but I just want to fill in some detailed gaps so that you know what we're all about. This organization is 30 years old. 1993 was its initial year. It's a voluntary membership nonprofit organization consisting of Webster residents who own shoreline property around Lake Winterpocket. Our mission is to preserve and to promote ecological and environmental well-being of Lake Winterpocket. And so to fulfill that goal, we test the water at least twice a year through the state labs at Department of Environmental Services, analyzing the water for bacteria, for phosphorus, for pH, for dissolved oxygen, water clarity, algae content, and excess mineral content. We also actively survey the water for invasive plant species such as milfoil, such as cyanobacteria, and we've done this for 28 consecutive years. And I will tell you that throughout all those years and even now this summer, the water remains among the highest quality of freshwater lakes in our state. We have guest expert speakers come to talk to us at our meetings and updating us landowners on how we can be better stewards of the lake. For example, they talk to us about, and we abide by this, monitoring the use of fertilizers around the lake, trying to minimize road and smooth surface runoff to encourage vegetative buffers along the shoreline. And to check our faulty septic systems. Hopefully they're not faulty. To check them all, just, I don't want to check them all, but we do the bacteria tests at certain points around the lake. And if anything is leaking, we pick it up by the E. coli counts. They have universally, on all the residential areas around the lake, been low. Non-existent. I mean, there are beavers and a few other creatures around that have to do their thing. But the point is that we don't have a human invasion of bacteria in the lake. So, that's that. But let's get really, oh, one other thing. We modify our behavior around the lake. We don't take a bath in the lake. We don't feed the ducks. We don't use phosphate-containing detergents. We don't dump brush in the lake. There's a lot of things that we do to preserve the quality of the water. Anyway, to get to the point of evening, and that is the competency of the Pond Hill Road Culvert. This came up because the excessive rains that we've had earlier this spring and summer have caused very high lake water levels. High water levels are bad because they threaten property shorelines. They can saturate low-lying septic leach fields and cause septic system failure and leakage into the lake. The only way for excess water to leave Lake Winterpocket is to exit through the culvert on Pond Hill Road. There's no other outlet. So if that culvert is blocked or collapses or otherwise fails, significant property damage and threats to lake water quality will be inevitable. The dependability of the current culvert is of great concern. I don't have the original papers on it, but it was likely a five-foot diameter metal cylindrical culvert that went in in 1984. And it has experienced some corrosion and sand fill in these 39 years. Lifespan for this type of culvert is said to be, and this is from the engineer that reviewed this before, 25 to 30 years. It is now nine to 14 years beyond its life expectancy. So on top of this culvert, there is a dirt roadway from White Plains Road to Westman Village, that's the left split, and Pond Hill Road going up the hill, that's the right split. The common portion of Pond Hill Road over the culvert has needed to be reinforced with dirt and gravel on occasion over time and by placing some overlying heavy wood beams to assure safe passage of cars and emergency vehicles and heavier traffic. This roadway is the only land access conduit for the nine dwellings in Westman Village. The culvert itself has been partially obstructed with silt from mudslides running down Pond Hill Road to the adjacent boat ramp and then spilling over into the culvert. These mudslides have been addressed by a butters and by the town road agents with grading and adjusting the runoff to some degree of success. It's much better. But still, when it really rains, we can see the stuff coming down Pond Hill Road. The culvert remains partially filled with one to two feet of silt and rocks from that runoff. To remove that sludge from the culvert insides would require a special state permit. I don't think that's ever been done.
I don't know. I don't agree with you.
So anyway, there's probably one-third obstructed with the silt and runoff right now. This past spring, there were lots of beavers trying to build a dam in front of and within the culvert, causing more blockage. And it's only by the hard work of certain volunteers removing by hand the branch and brush debris that complete obstruction of the culvert was avoided. We had an expert come from Fish and Game to talk to us about beaver activity because we realized this might be something we could help. But he said to us, "Bad news, folks. Trapping and relocating beavers would be a wasted effort." And that's because if the water's right and the place is right, if it's not that beaver, it's this beaver. They come. So physically removing the brush was the most effective way to deal with it, and we've done so on many occasions this summer. Possible culvert replacement had been discussed by the town's Select Board June 2018. With lots of townspeople participating in the discussion, an environmental engineer evaluated the entire issue to provide outside assessment and advice. And she recommended, at that time, culvert replacement. She basically said there were two choices of culverts which could be debated. One was the so-called squashed elliptical metal cylindrical culvert pipe, kind of similar to what's there now. And that would have an estimated lifetime of 25 to 30 years. The second choice was kind of like what was put in on White Plains Road, a concrete rectangular box culvert. Larger, much more substantial, and able to weather all the elements much, much better. That would have a life expectancy of about 75 years. There was a price difference. I won't tell the prices because they're probably not pertinent to today. But anyway, the board seemed in favor of replacement and they even, the select people even cast votes saying which type of culvert they think should go in. The road agent also had a vote and seemed to be in favor. There was to be a warrant article for culvert replacement at the next town meeting, which would have been March 2019, but somehow the process broke down and nothing ever happened. So, I'm getting close to the end, folks. Here we are, five years later. The culvert is now 39 years old and deteriorating. If you look inside, you can see the corrosion of the metal. Remember, life expectancy, 25 to 30 years. We're now 39 years old with that culvert. Should it collapse or become non-functional, not only would the lives of the Westman Village residents be at risk, emergency vehicle access couldn't happen. Just getting to their homes or getting away from their homes would be impossible. But moreover, the quality of the lake water would be seriously jeopardized because of shoreline erosion, changes in watershed runoff, and septic system malfunction from flooding. We haven't consulted climatologists, but anything you read, it's pretty evident that in the coming years, we are going to have more adverse weather, rain, storms, you name it, tornadoes. We can't do anything about that, but we need to be sure that our lake is safe and able to decompress itself. So in conclusion, I would just say reliable control of lake water levels via a new durable and functional culvert would be the best assurance that we can maintain the pristine quality of water in Lake Winterpocket. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have. Dick Benson sits beside me. Dick has lived on the lake longer than I have. And actually was present at that 2018 town meeting. He may have a few observations he wants to share.
Yeah, I'm Dick Benson. Lake Winterpocket since 1980. Excuse me. And I first became aware of the issue of the Pond Hill Culvert problem in 1984, when at that time, there was a bridge spanning the outlet of Lake Winterpocket. The bridge collapsed when a truck went over it. Kat Austin, who is here tonight, was pregnant and her midwife had a lot of difficulty getting to assist at the birth, as you might imagine. So we know how long ago the culvert was a problem because her son is now 39 years old. The culvert was replaced at that time, or culvert was put in place at that time for the first time and has lasted to the present. In 2017, there was a warrant, an article, excuse me, 2016, there was a warrant article, number nine, on the town meeting. And it was to see if the town would raise an appropriate sum of $25,000 for project planning, engineering, design work, and construction work related to Pond Hill Road and Lake Winterpocket stormwater runoff management and sediment pollution. Someone at the meeting asked, "Explain this to me." Emmett Bean said, and I quote him, "That Pond Hill Road has turned into a brook bed and comes down over the hill to the boat ramp and into the lake. The runoff is contaminating the lake and the culvert pipe is filling with sediment and rusting. The concern is for maintaining the water quality of the lake and access to properties on the other side of the culvert." That warrant article was passed and has subsequently led to the discussion at the Select Board meetings during the year 2018. At that time, my understanding is that the site work and engineering was completed and that the funding was available. A long discussion was held as to whether or not this was proper use of town money and one thing led to another, and as Warren said, a town warrant was proposed for the 2019 town meeting, but never came out. I followed up on this the following year with Leslie Palmer, who was town administrator at that time. And I asked her what the status of things were. We hadn't seen that there was anything from the town meeting. And at that time, the Lake Winterpocket Conservation Association wrote a letter to the Select Board asking what the status was and could we have a response as to where the project stood. And she wrote back to me, or to us, and said, "At this time, the Select Board intends to move forward with the project. However, I'm waiting to hear back from the engineer as to her availability to participate, which in part will determine the time line for completion." You gagged by a bit, Wolfers. You've got to get them fitted. Sorry I cannot pinpoint things further at this point, but we hope to have more information soon. I followed up with a phone call August 7th and she informed me that at that time, the bridge on White Plains Road at Knights Meadow Marsh had been red flagged and that repair and replacement of the bridge, that bridge took priority over the Pond Hill Road project. That project is now close completion except for final tarring of the road, as I see it.
Correct.
So now, there's been several years, at least four or five years, that have passed since this issue was visited. And I think we're asking the U.S. Select Board to revisit this issue, hopefully developing a time line for completion of the project. Probably will require additional study, additional engineering. Things have changed over this period of time. And the reason, as Warren has said, is that the stormwater runoff, the sediment pollution and sediment obstruction to arrested culvert threatens the quality of water to Lake Winterpocket and access to homes on the other side. One other thought that I had is that there's been a large amount of money passed by Congress on the infrastructure bill and it may be sufficient grant money to assist with this project if it were to be pursued. Count's off there.
Okay. And what, do you have any comments that you want to make immediately on this? Okay.
No, I got it.
So I'll start then for kind of my understanding and explaining some of the issues that I see as coming out of the initial meeting minutes and stuff that I have in front of me, which I'm sure you've gone through from, for example, the 2018 meeting. So, the first thing based on your earlier comment is, to my knowledge, if you're doing something like a replacement culvert that hasn't failed or you're changing something, yes, you absolutely have to go through DES. However, to clear out a culvert, especially as routine maintenance, in my knowledge, doesn't require a DES permit. So I would suggest that you follow up with maybe DES or even a road agent on that because I know that we do routinely have to clear things out of culverts all over the place and we used to have to clear them out of the ones on White Plains itself until now we've got a big box culvert instead. The boards that you mentioned that were over the top of the culvert in the meeting minutes, that's stated as having been placed by a logging company and left there on request to help stabilize things. It doesn't say who requested that, but that makes sense to me. I couldn't say who, why, or how that happened. But that kind of gets to the next portion, which is one of the major problems here, which is all of that is class six road. And as a town, we are not allowed to spend money on a class six road. We partially worked around this, or I should say, previous Select Boards partially worked around this by declaring that Pond Hill was an emergency access lane so that they could at least do the ditching and make sure that the water wasn't all going straight into the lake, as you had mentioned. But that doesn't allow for much of anything beyond, say, making sure a side-by-side or a four-wheel-drive cruiser might possibly be able to get nearby in case of an emergency. So, that's kind of where that is and why we wouldn't be able to just go spend. I don't have the warrant article information in front of me. I just have the Select Board meeting minutes. So that would probably be helpful for us to get.
I'm not meeting. I'm just going to get my notebook.
Certainly.
That was 2016.
Yeah, he mentioned 2016 Town Meeting warrant article that passed.
Nice.
And so, that's kind of where the funding aspect of it would sit. Regarding the comments about White Plains taking precedence, I can understand that. But if it were passed specific to Pond Hill, then it wouldn't be something you could just take the funds and move to a different place. If however, it was passed as just funding going into bridges and culverts, which we have as a overarching fund for town, with the explanation that this might go towards Pond Hill, that would be fairly common and fairly normal and the funds would have been diverted. The last one, which I love how you're trying to be helpful with the infrastructure-type funding, there actually have been lots of different grants towards bridges and infrastructure. That works in a couple different ways, one of which, the majority of which is just sent to the state to do what they want to with. And the second way is to support those initiatives further. That's actually what we've been doing with Closed Pin Bridge, which has been in process almost as long as White Plains and this. And why we were happy to announce, I think it was last year, that for Closed Pin Bridge, after all of those funds, the town no longer has a portion of the payment. We're only paying for engineering and the state is picking up, it's either 75 or 80%, and then the feds are picking up the rest of the construction. So we are making good use of those types of grants, but they're already being used at Closed Pin Bridge. You're also correct about White Plains. That's now been taken care of and just needs the tarring after the final compaction. That's expected towards the end of this fall. The interesting bit that you bring up was about the engineering and waiting on the engineer and availability. Without trying to say too much, that engineer no longer works with this town.
I understand.
And so, and anything that we've had in previous in-process, for example, White Plains, has had to be re-engineered. So we can certainly go down the route of doing that, but it's not like we can take what's been there and try to apply it. I would not be adverse to reaching out to the same folks who did White Plains because A, did a decent job, B, did it at very good pricing, and C, turned it around fairly quickly.
Yeah.
To at least get a, I don't know if they can give a quote for the whole thing without doing engineering, but to give kind of an estimate, like, this is what we think would be engineering-wise, this is probably the kind of cost towards a box culvert. And the reason I say that is because being that there was a bridge there originally, looking at the notes, it does sound like the box culvert would be the most sensible way to more permanently take care of it. Obviously not the most expensive way, but probably the most appropriate way, unless, for example, residents were allowed to build a bridge again. The comments about town meeting and warrant articles, if that warrant article specifically set aside money to do this project, then we should, that money needs to be accounted for and be able to be brought forth from someplace towards this project. If it was not appropriating a specific amount of funding, then we would need to get said quotes and estimates to be able to do that and probably add it into bridges and culverts in the next couple of years to then be able to do something of that nature. But again, the class six part causes a problem, which is why it probably needs to be a full-on warrant article for this amount to do this project.
I would just have one comment. The previous warrant article, I haven't looked at it, but I doubt it was non-lapsing, so it's probably...
Probably true.
Lapsed.
Okay. So I think that's probably where we are and thank you for bringing this to our attention. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments before I continue on my suggestions?
No, except that if we were to, and I'm not sure what we do next, but if we were to move forward on this, I would, yeah, I would reach out to them and I'd also might reach out to a non-concrete box culvert just to see, just if we're going to put this forward.
Oh, just for what the different?
Yeah, costs were, and yeah, I know the lifespan is different. I totally understand that, but you know, it may be something, you know, because it isn't heavily traveled either, you know, which culverts, you know, take it a little harder when they're heavily traveled. So, yeah, that would be my only suggestion. But something that we should probably...
Well, and obviously, once we get to deciding what we really want to do, since I'd be hard-pressed to find that it would be less than 10 grand unless it was, hey, the culvert failed, we're going to tell Len that he can go replace it. I don't see that it would be less than 10 grand, so it would have to go out to either a bid or multiple quotes anyway. But...
You would also need to have a permit, the wetlands permit, the DES.
Yeah, which would come along with the engineering.
And which would go along with the engineering.
You'd have to have a new engineer.
Hopefully it wouldn't be as high as White Plains, but it could be between 5,000 and 10,000 for that. And I guess I'm trying to understand what you'd like me to do as far as pricing for a similar culvert that is there now compared to a box culvert such as White Plains.
Well, I was just, yeah, I was just suggesting that, but is that, is that what we move forward or do we?
I, so... I guess there's one, since it is a failing culvert... I guess, there's one, since it is a failing culvert, and there is an emergency access that goes over it, there's obviously the moving forward correct sort of thing. But the biggest problem is that since it's a culvert coming out of a lake, not just a crossing when it's wet and rainy, you would have to involve all the dewatering, just like we did for White Plains. So, that's not just a have Emmett dig it up and drop a new one in its place thing. So, I think we need to look at what the warrant article is, and then we also need to look at what we can and can't do regarding just replacing it. Because if we are allowed to just replace it, then the only thing we would need to do, I think, is to have the road agent go ask for bids from dewatering companies, or get somebody in to do the dewatering, so that he could then replace it. Which, of course, we don't have funding to do this year, but we could make sure it is within budgeted specs for upcoming years, if that's something we can do with the emergency access. If it's not, then we probably need to look at what the most appropriate warrant article is for next year's warrant, and that probably has to have a dollar figure associated with it.
Yes.
So, unless we say it's X amount extra to be put into bridges and culverts, with the understanding that it's towards this project, and any not-used in that would remain in bridges and culverts. We might be able to do something like that.
You would have to be careful, because the bridges and culverts, it's written in a certain way, so it wouldn't be able to segregate this edition of monies just for Pond Hill.
Okay. So, we would need to look at however, but I'm sure we can write an appropriate warrant article. We just have to figure out.
Right.
What that would be.
Now, that's not a private road though.
No, it's just Classics.
Just a Class 6. But the road that goes to the lake is a private.
It's not a private road.
But now, does that widen up? I haven't been on that in years. Is that wide enough for emergency vehicles too, now?
You, about less than ten years ago, we knocked down the original Austin camp. And Emmett Bean brought the fire department out with all his trucks to do some practicing before the demolition took place. So, yes.
I guess it could get over there then.
So, you can get over there.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
One other, one other minor point I'd make for Ms. Herrick is that, sure, the traffic across here is Westman Village. It's also, at the top of Pond Hill Road, there's a residence. But on the other side of the culvert is a boat launch. And at any one time, we could have six to eight cars parked there to deliver canoes, kayaks, but more often, we're seeing now bigger boats, party boats, being launched at that site.
Really?
So, there is considerable traffic, more so than just for the home.
So, is that considered a public boat launch then?
It is. If you look at, I looked up New Hampshire boat launches, and found that at that site, there was a car with a canoe on the top of it. So, I think it's kind of designated as maybe a small boat launch. It's not a launch in the typical sense where it shows trailers being backed into the water, but its use has transformed into a formal boat launch.
Kat, you may have the update on this. My impression is that that is a privately-owned property, that the launch is on private property. And it's because of the willingness of the current owner, who actually lives in Hawaii now, and is never there, has permitted whoever wants to put a boat in, to put it in. But I think it's owned privately. Am I correct about that, Kat?
It is, and it's, she doesn't own it anymore.
Oh.
It's in, it's in our trust.
But it's private ownership. There was a time when the state wanted to buy that and create a state-run boat launch. But that didn't really get traction, because it would have required really a total change in the geography of that area, outhouses, parking areas, waste baskets, all kinds of things, that that little park is really not capable of doing. And so, that project, and then there's a liability aspect too. The state did not want to take on any liability if they were to put that launch in. And so, for all those reasons, that never happened. But people talk about, well, you know, it's, the Lake Windapocket's part of Webster, but Webster residents, unless you live on the lake, can't get in. That is not true. We have not, I don't think anyone has ever turned away anyone that wants to put a boat in the water and does so. And there's also that little launch on White Plains Road, which we invite Webster residents, go ahead and use the water. So, we're not excluding anybody here, but we just want to make it safe. If I might, David, I was a little confused when you started talking about Class 6 roadways. I know what that is. And it seemed to really, maybe I didn't hear correctly, but kind of put a kibosh on this, well, we can't really do it, because we can't do anything on a Class 6 road. And I wanted to really have a conversation with you about that, if this is appropriate time. But then the discussion went on, as though, well, maybe we could get new pricing, and talk about what culverts might be appropriate, so, which made me think that, on the other hand, you really are willing to move forward with this. Did I read that correctly?
So, there's, with a Class 6 road, we as a town, or as the select board, for example, or the road agent, can't say, we're gonna go take care of it. And so, that's what the Class 6 limits. We can't just say, we're gonna do it, because it's one of our roads. Because it's Class 6, we're not allowed to put money into it. With the designation of it being emergency access lane, we're allowed to spend extremely minimal amounts to make sure that an emergency something can get through, such as a side-by-side or similar. And we have a few of those throughout town. And Pond Hill was designated that way, to be able to do the ditching, so that it wouldn't be the entire road running into the lake. And so that we could maintain emergency access, for example, up to the top of the hill.
But there's a dollar limit on that, you said?
It's not like it's a dollar limit, but like, it's, everything has to be extremely minimal, because it's only for the purpose of being able to make it, so an emergency vehicle will be able to get through. Like, there's very large limitations of what's allowed for that versus we're maintaining a road. With that being said, the public body, with warrant articles, can say almost anything that they want to, including, let's change the designation of the road. There are large gotches for that, and that's probably not the best way to do this. Best way is to probably say it's in the best interest of the town, and the lake, and conservation and preservation, to do this project, and to put forth how much that would be, and then let town meeting vote on it. If they support it, then we can go do the project with the town's blessing. If they don't, we can't, can't work on it. So, there is that limitation. But I'm certainly all for trying to do the legwork to make sure that an appropriate warrant article could get put on the warrant.
Just want to emphasize what you said, and I said, and that is, we're not just talking about the Westman Village people here. That's certainly a important piece. But the viability of the lake, if you know what I mean, the health and the water of the lake. It's just too bad those two issues come together, because they kind of confuse each other, and the conversation gets a little bit diverse. But I just would say, if that culvert fails, you've got a lot of other people around that lake that are gonna suffer in the town, and so on. I just, I would like to, I looked up Class 6 roads, and there's a great big blog about this. I think it was New Hampshire Municipal Association put it online. Forgive me if I'm nitpicking, but I just want your opinion about this.
It's been a while since I've gone through it, but NHMA has done a lot of things on Class 6 roads.
Okay.
What is and is not allowed.
Well, here's one. RSA 23159A, quote. This is about Class 6 roads now. Allows municipality to undertake such work deemed necessary to render such way passable by firefighting, equipment, and rescue, and other emergency vehicles. And that's exactly what's needed, what the situation is here. We're talking about the passage of such vehicles to the Westman Village, just to address that part of it. Anyway, it's in the RSA wording, reportedly, so I would just say that there is some flexibility of interpretation about what could be done.
Which is what he was trying to say. Yeah, I think that's what he was trying to say, is that we could.
We've tried to do some of that, and that's how we've gotten to do as much as the town has already done, basically.
Yeah. If it were a Class 5 road, then all is different. But my question is, in the modern day, if Westman Village was just an idea in the mind of Bob Austin, and he hadn't built it yet, and that was a Class 6 road, would he be able to do it? So, my impression is, you can't build anything on a Class 6 road, or has access to a Class 6 road, and yet Bob Austin did it. So, now we got all these properties, and we gotta deal with them.
So, having spent time on the planning board, and we have somebody who may correct me, that currently sits on the planning board, and our supervisor, that handles the planning board and ZBA, I'll try to summarize by kind of, sort of, maybe. The, the best practice, and what everybody is legally advised to do, is to say no to building on Class 6 roads. There is nothing in the law that says you can't allow somebody to build on a Class 6 road. The general best practice, if you want to allow somebody to build on a Class 6 road, is to tell them they must improve the road to current Class 5 standards, including through their subdivision and development, before they may build. So, feel free to correct me, but that would be the, like, if someone tried to do that today, and you wanted to allow it, that's usually the way that it would kind of be put forward.
I think that one also existed prior to zoning.
What was that? Prior to zoning?
Prior to zoning.
I can remember my kids having swimming lessons, Red Cross swimming lessons on the lake. It was great. I wish we had a beach or something for the town too, and just something for kids. Because I love that lake, it's beautiful. I guess they still use the rock.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would also suggest that, while they are different issues, the current chair of the planning board, though I believe on his own volition, not at the planning board's.
No, his own, yep.
Okay. Is trying to work out how a project may work to find ways to get the town, some form of beach availability on Windapocket. I don't, I don't personally know exactly where that is, or what he's thinking along those regards. However, if he's thinking about such a thing, and maybe it's by where you're referring to a boat launch, I don't know, but if that's all the case, then maybe there is a way to put it all together as one project on a warrant article that would do kind of everything all at once. Just thinking outside the box, so that may be a future possibility.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. I think the town should have access to the lake. When the Austins had the property across the barrow, the old schoolhouse, that portion of the lake, you'd see townspeople's cars parked there all the time. Unfortunately, the family has sold that piece of property. The new owners, who took it over, closed that beach to the town. So, there has been a history of openness and willingness for the town to enjoy Lake Windapocket. I think we'd all like to see this continue. I hope there is a resolution to that end.
I know the town should have bought that house, the selectman at the time. I didn't realize that. I was not a selectman, because I would have fought to have that.
You could probably comment more.
Right. When my sister, who owned that house from my grandfather, when she owned it, she asked the town to take the beach. She offered the beach to the town.
And I know, I know who the selectmen were.
I know, I know, we all know.
Yeah.
But the town said no.
I don't think that would happen again. I think there's a whole different set of people here now.
Probability issue, but.
That's sad.
So, a couple different possibilities. Hopefully, one of them can, can turn around and take care of this for you.
Could you kind of summarize where we are right now?
Why don't I ask these folks, because they're the ones that will do it for us?
Okay.
Well, definitely be able to spot.
Yeah, yeah, okay, go.
Well, I think that, from what I am hearing you say, I think it would be good information to have the cost of replacing it in kind with the same type of culvert versus a box culvert similar to the White Plains project. I think that I would do a little more research about the Class 6 road and the emergency lane, and what we could do legally. I'd also be interested in the DES permits, and where those would be. So, we have as much information. If you're thinking of going into next year's town meeting, we'd have to have that for the warrant article. I'm also, I know that there was work done on this, and it seems a shame that money was lost, or however, maybe that's not the right term, but.
The engineer.
That it wasn't, that it wasn't used. But maybe there's some sort of, I always try to salvage things.
Right.
I might be fooling myself, but just the same. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking would be the, what we would do, is go forward, maybe speak to Mitji. I mean, we have a good relationship with them for the project, of what we'd be looking to for costs, things like that. Also, I think that it would be very important to involve Emmett, and his, the emergency equipment and so forth, what he feels. And so, I think that's where I am.
One more thought about money. I read the 2018 minutes, and there was a statement that there was $645,000 in the capital reserve fund. And someone allegedly made the comment, well, that would cover the cost of that culvert, whether it's concrete or whether it's metal. So, the money is there for the taking. I mean, I'm sort of overstating maybe the, what I read into it. But I thought, you know, is the capital reserve fund someplace to consider taking at least a portion? I totally agree with going after the American Rescue Plan Act that the current federal administration has offered out money to projects just like this, bridges and roads and culverts hopefully. And that really, I think, deserves some look, because that's not our money, and if we can get that now, it may not be there in a year or two.
I think you're talking about the capital reserve fund for bridges and, is that the one you're talking about?
Perhaps so.
That would be the only one that I would expect would be that large.
And luckily for us, because I live near Close Pin Bridge, we're getting, we had money for that. Well, the government is gonna give us the whole money for that, so that's like a million dollars. That's very nice, so.
Well, I mean, we certainly could check into that type of funding.
Yeah.
As of the end of July, the Bridges Fund has just under $500,000, of which 20% of the design for Close Pin Bridge needs to be reserved, and I'm not sure what we're talking about, dollars there. I think we're talking about $100,000.
And I think we still have to deal with right-of-way purchases as well.
And we have right-of-way issues that we're going to have to purchase.
So, does the town do that right-of-way purchases, or the?
The engineering firm is handling it, but I think we will still be on the.
Hope for the money for right-of-way? Really? And paying them to negotiate.
So, I guess the point I'm making is, I mean, we're not broke, but we can't count on, tie in $500,000.
Well, and we still have. Well, and we still have, we still have a fair chunk of culvert and bridge payments still to go for a couple, several of the culverts that were replaced due to or because of or during the storm.
Yeah, that's right.
A lot of the gravelling that was done with and on those, and then pavement that will be done on top of said culverts and also on top of White Plains. So we're still looking at, I'm just gonna spitball, I guess, of, you know, 150, 200 to 200 grand that'll come out of it still for all of that work.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's not like we really have 500 grand sitting there. And then it's another however much towards VHB as we continue to finish the engineering for Closepin Bridge and then the payments for that, for the land. So, probably close to most of it is spoken for.
VHB is gonna be at least 100,000.
What's that?
That's the consultant.
They're the engineers for Closepin Bridge. I believe, and I don't know if it's still available, I believe that around the time we were starting the discussions of getting White Plains Bridge going again, there was discussion about a grant that DES offers yearly for enhancing water flow and wildlife and keeping natural things natural. For whatever reason, he didn't qualify for White Plains. But we should look at if we can qualify for that, for this, for next year.
And they come from, sometimes they're in different agencies. Sometimes they're in DES, and sometimes they're in DOT. But sure, we can.
And I would say this would fall under the DES, Portland. DOT because it's more off the.
Well, and it's also making sure that it doesn't ruin the lake.
That's right, yes, the lake, exactly.
The one that was offered from DOT, and we were already in the midst of our project, so in other words, it didn't really apply, but you're talking five years in the future.
Oh, wow, that far in the future, wow.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one other comment. Back in the July meeting, 2016, 2018, the engineer at that time was to write a grant proposal for HMGP funding. Could somebody tell me what type of grant proposal that might be?
HMGP.
No idea.
Let me see if I can make something up.
What was it?
I'm trying to find it so I can see.
HMGP.
Hazard mitigation grant program.
Yeah, okay.
Google's wonderful.
Hazard mitigation grant program.
That would be another place to look, too.
And that's a FEMA grant.
FEMA?
Okay, I remember seeing references to FEMA, but not in regards to.
Worst case scenario, they'd say, oh, I mean.
Right.
That makes sense, okay.
Particularly with the silt infiltration and the pollution and.
Makes sense to me.
Maybe a good avenue to pursue.
Yeah, makes sense to me. Well, thank you very much.
Talk to Emmett about clearing the silt out.
Yes, we should ask him what can and can't be done there. There's also a possibility that the silt is what's holding the culvert together, if it's actually as bad as you're making it sound.
That is possible.
So, I can't say that even if we can do it, that we should, but we can definitely talk to our great agent about what we can and should do.
Yeah, the threat is either collapse or obstruction, both.
All right, are there any other comments or questions on this topic? All right.
I'd like to thank you very much for giving us a chance to bring this before you, and I trust that we'll see some follow-through, as you say, and we look forward to hearing more information and hopefully at some point, moving forward in a practical way with this project. I realize it's a lot of parts to it.
Thank you very much, and if you don't see us talking about it fairly soon again in the near future, especially if you don't see us talking about it while we're going through, like, proposed warrant articles, please get back in touch with us, A, to remind us, and B, if there's a reason that we can't at the time, you absolutely can also do a petition warrant article to have it covered. So even if we can't do it, or we forget, or whatever the reason is, you can do it via petition warrant article as well.
For the unknown, how does that work? A petition warrant article, how does it?
The short version.
25 registered voters with the language, it's by a certain due date. Am I right on that?
Yes, yeah.
You write, if you write a warrant article that you would like to see passed, have 25 people sign off that they would like to see it passed to, and you submit it by the cutoff date, which.
To the town clerk.
Is it like February, I think?
It's, yeah, so many Mondays before, Tuesdays.
It's usually like sometime early mid-February, I think.
The ideal is to have the select board insert the warrant article. That's the ideal. But if you find that they are not supporting an article, that's when you have the opportunity to do a petition warrant article, and you can certainly check with us, and we'll help you with that as far as dates and so forth. But we'll see, I'll move on and see what I can find out. And please don't hesitate to call me if you have.
I was gonna ask you, who is the best point person not to take up unnecessary time?
You're looking at us.
If you call, if you call and just go to the town administrator in the calling, or if you email the town administrator, it's all on the website, that'll all get to this gentleman, and he can answer your questions.
Okay.
Even if it's, I'm sorry, I don't know more yet, because, you know.
I'm really good at saying that.
We have had engineers in the past that have just not responded to us for like a year, so.
Well, we got rid of them.
Yes.
If I could ask everyone to make sure you sign the, sign in for us, please, for our records, we appreciate that, thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you for your willingness to take another look at this issue.
Absolutely, thank you for bringing it up, so we don't forget things that we weren't here as a board to know.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right.
Should we take the sly with us?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. I mean, it almost came right up and kissed me a few minutes ago.
That moves us on to our second appointment, which is regarding this Chesley and towing. So, do you want to open some windows down?
It just feels really stuffy in here. Doesn't it feel that way to you? Does it feel stuffy to you?
I'll open a couple of windows.
Then flies. Are you actually gonna clean the windows?
We need to get some.
Oh, right, I know.
The second one has a broken screen.
Yeah, whatever, we'll get more flies.
It hit the fan, it's a band-aid. I think that helps with the.
Yeah, this one's got a bit of wind, drives from there.
When you came on here, it felt like thick. But that's because it got hot, that's because it got, because even I got home today, it's like turning on the ECO.
That's ridiculous, huh?
Yeah, and the kids are like, can we turn them back on? Because I've been complaining about our electric bill. I said, yeah.
Our office was very cool, I did bump the carriage up a little bit.
I'm surprised it wasn't been as bad. Actually gotten warm, we'd have to open up the door up here. It's cooler in the kitchen. So, he's not here to go over it. But, for the sake of where we are, he was going to come and to request the ability to be on the towing list. And so unfortunately, there was an event happening, so you folks couldn't make it last time.
Yeah, we found him. He was in, he walked all the way to Bosworth.
But, so, I'll ask a couple of questions just so that we as a board kind of know what's going on. One, do you actually have a tow list where, like, you go through it and call everybody on it?
We have three companies that would consistently call, because they're the companies that show up all the time. We've got a few companies that we'll call if we can't find anybody else, and usually it's, yeah, maybe we can make it in two hours, maybe we can't. It's kind of like when you call AAA. I mean, they, yeah, we'll be there in half an hour. Well, hang on, that half an hour is in a different time zone. Because it's not an hour. So we've got one company that we kind of rely on more because they've got the most trucks, and we call them there within a half hour. It would be great to have one in town. He has to have a registered business in town. He's got, and one of my things I was gonna talk to him today is, how many cars do you have that aren't registered in there?
So.
I mean, there are a ton of them.
So, I guess we'll talk about some of that. But I wanted to go down the list first, so there isn't really a list to be.
Not really, and it's depending on the time of the day, the time of the night, who do we know that consistently shows up at 1:00 in the morning to come get somebody versus coming at 9:00 in the morning? You can call anybody at 9:00 in the morning, they'll show up, but 1:00 in the morning, no, it's the way they'll show.
So who's one of the people that is consistent?
All town, they're not too far away. And then, this is the one, we call them, and they're there almost instantly.
Dependability makes a big difference.
That's the biggest thing. It's like Rusty Drew showed up at the.
Isn't she lovely? That was perfect.
That must be your pretty wife.
I'm good, hey!
He showed up, he didn't ask to be on our call list, but if we have any big trucks, we call him, because he's got the biggest reach to pick them up. But he says, he told us he had four trucks show up for the parade. He said, if you need us, here's some business guys. If you need us, call us. If you can't find anybody else, call us. They're in the tilt, takes them a little while to get here. But they said, hey, we got plenty of trucks, if you need us, call us. If you don't, we're all set with that. Which is a good way to be, as far as I'm concerned.
So they were in the parade, our parade?
Yeah, they had four big trucks here.
Oh, wow, yeah, I saw the trucks, I didn't really realize.
What was that?
I ended up walking.
Rusty Drews.
Yeah, yeah, Rusty's very developed, yeah.
I've known his father, well, when his father was alive, 45, 50 years, and he used to always tow, because we lived in town, I mean.
And he's reasonable. See, we've been caught up in a situation where we, actually, I called into Rusty, and he was on his way, but the DOT decided to call somebody else, and it was probably three times the amount of money than it needed to be. So what I'm saying is, you're right, there's certain dependability, and the poor, I say poor people, who knows what they're up against? But when you're helping them out for getting a towing company, you don't want to get the one that's.
It's gonna gouge them. And there is one company that we used in the past, but we will not call ever when they come out and pull a car out of a ditch and charge them $500.
Oh, jeez.
That's just, that would be insane.
Which sounds like a lot, but even, but I know what he's saying. You know what I mean, everybody else has got that a little bit more reasonable.
So, since you mentioned it, at the last, at the meeting of the historic building, he went on and categorized and listed all of the cars and registrations not being sold, who owned them, et cetera. So I'm not gonna rehash that, but suffice it to say, the summary was that they may not all be registered, but they are all titled, and most of them are leaving because most of them are other residents of the house that won't be there long.
Then they should be going. And he needs to go to the planning board to get the business.
So that leads to the last part, which is the business aspect. When we talked with him about the business aspect, he was kind of back and forth about saying what was what. And kept referring to, I believe it was Warner, where he tows his stuff too, because there's an auto yard or mechanic or something there that he tows his stuff to.
He says he has a storage unit that places store.
Well, he made it sound like it was a mechanic or an auto yard or something of that nature. However, both at the, one time that he did go to the planning board in the past, according to the minutes, he was looking for a, what would I have to do to run the business out of, you know, this property in Webster? And the listing for the property, let me find the right spot here, so I say the right kind. The business information listed for the business details is listing the principal office address as Battle Street in Webster. So, that is absolutely an issue if he has not gone through the process with the planning board and the ZBA. And so he does definitely need to go through that process.
Secretary of State, he should go through the process.
Yeah, and so.
His business cards have Battle Street also.
Okay. So we definitely need to make sure that he knows he has to go through that process. And if he does it, he's not in compliance with all sorts of things. I was hoping he'd be here and you could just tell him, yeah, you're gonna have to do this, but since he's not, I think a letter's probably.
It is, I'd say, a letter would be good, but it's not anything that he hasn't heard in the past.
Well, now it'll be in writing.
Yes, and the safest way.
That's right, and then, and then if he wants to comply, then I'm sure we can work something out.
Absolutely, I mean, it'd be great to have a right here that we could call him. He can be here very quickly.
And the ZBA will take all of that into consideration when they look at it, I'm sure. So hopefully that happens, and it doesn't have to be a code compliance issue instead of a, this is what we want to do issue.
Yeah, because we have no, it's no skin off us who we call. It's who's gonna get there the fastest to get the car out of the ditch, out of the road, or the people safely out. That's all we care for. And we're happy to use anybody, I don't care where they are, as long as they can show up on time and they're not gonna rape the people.
Exactly, sounds good. All right, well, since he's not here, I guess we'll leave it at that in that we should have a letter for our next meeting to sign and hand him if he's here, or mail to him if he's not.
Can I write something else up?
Sure.
A quarter?
Only so I can leave, no. I have nothing to order.
No, I said, do you have a quarter?
Well, I tried to insert another 25 cents.
I tried to pay for U and D if you weren't gonna be here to reimburse you for the money, so I figured that would cover.
That's right.
Very good, really good.
Your next meeting on 9/15, 9/5, I will not be here. I'll be in Alaska, so I will not be here.
Nice.
Seems kind of drastic to go out of the going.
Can't get much farther away.
That was good.
And still be in this country.
Well, have fun.
Yeah, definitely, should be good.
We did have, I remember that we told somebody that they should come back at that meeting. Was that for, at least, or for?
That was for Emmett.
That was for Emmett, okay.
That's world stuff.
Enjoy your time, have fun.
It should be good. And it's 22 of us phones, so it'll be.
Oh, my gosh.
It'll be a party.
A big party, wow.
Now, we don't want to see on the Alaska papers.
Let's hope not.
Maybe you'll get snow up there.
Well, they said bring one close.
Really?
We'll see.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too, appreciate it.
I don't know, I'll probably see you tomorrow.
That'll be exciting.
I'm sure.
Okay, have a good night.
See ya, thank you.
So that moves us to old business, which I don't have listed. Do you have any to?
We don't have any old business.
Okay, so I will bring up two bits of old business to request information about. One, during our joint meeting with Hopkinken, Mr. Cass said that he was gonna provide us a report on the transfer station and its financials and so on. Have we gotten anything from him?
We have not gotten that. I emailed him, actually. We have not gotten that. I emailed him actually the other day. And in the correspondence, I had gave you a copy of what I had come up with so far, which is basically incorporating the points that the board made. So I guess I will call.
Perfect.
All right. And the second bit there is, we also talked about having joint CIP committee meeting slash information or a member going back and forth about them. Knowing that CIP is getting itself started, we should make sure that those communication lines are going and that they are at least inviting somebody to come over when the time is correct.
I don't know who to invite, but I did send Administrator Cass an email asking for the information. I sent them the requests. But I'm sure we can remind tomorrow if they have calls, if they have a member they can send over or else someone we can send over theirs. Or I'll go.
Either that or a joint, like this is the time we're talking about the transfer station meeting where both of them meet, like either way is probably fine. Since none of that is really defined as of yet, we should try to figure it out and make sure that that's happening. The, I can cover that in correspondence. So, yeah, I guess. Oh, the other old business, which I briefly asked at the start, but where are we with the, can you update us where we are with the retaining wall section here?
Well, we did have the gentleman came and gave us the price of the retaining wall and I believe the board approved that. And it has been ordered and it was going to be delivered at Emmett's and I need to talk with Emmett to see where we are with it.
Okay. Sounds good there. All right. So that brings us to, if I've got the right window, unless anyone else has old business to bring up?
No.
Okay, that brings us to new business, soccer field porta potty.
Usually I just make this decision on my own and I don't drag you through the porta potty.
Well, I was going to say soccer field potty.
This, obviously the town has done many years for the Webster Youth Soccer League. And now the Webster Youth Soccer League is now the Mananok Valley Youth Soccer League.
Mananok or Meramack?
I'm sorry.
Meramack, thank you. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Mananok's in another.
I know, I know. That's what I said. What are we doing?
You know, that didn't show that Dee was paying attention. Because I heard you say that and I'm like, well, that's a weird name from over here.
I did that so Dee would make.
Wake me up. That's right.
Yeah, I spent a lot of years using Mananok.
I spent thirty years in Meramack Valley. The school board's.
So they move around now to different, different facilities. Last year, we did sponsor the porta potty. It costs about three hundred dollars.
And that is, since it's Meramack Valley now, it's, it's through the school system, correct?
You know, I don't think it is. No.
It's all a little.
It's a, it's a, a separate organization. I'm sure the school has a lot to do with providing kids, but I mean, I think it's a separate organization, not the, like very similar to the Webster. Webster's just merged with other towns in the Meramack Valley school.
Because there's not enough kids from Webster and Salisbury and all that, so they pile all in together.
Do you think it'll be three hundred for this year?
It may not be. I mean, I'm just using the worst case scenario. I mean.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and I guess I look at it as.
Excuse me.
Oh, you missed. I don't think that's bad money spent personally. I, I don't care who's doing their little thingy things. I mean, it's still towns. Kids come down and play in the fields, you know, even with the, with the playground, you know, you, you, they might use that porta potty, you know.
Well, we spend very, I mean, very little money in the recreation budget of a town.
So, so my feeling is that's kind of a no brainer just to keep doing it and don't depend on somebody else because we all know, am I saying this right, right? Because that's what you're kind of saying, like.
Well, I, I would encourage you to continue.
Okay, that, good. So I make a motion to continue.
My question is, I know that we had, I don't think we actually need a vote. Well, maybe we do because it's an item, but the, where would that come out of the budget? Because previously we had the donation to soccer. And that, I believe was removed out of the budget when they were no longer Webster Youth Soccer in existence. So.
I would suspect it would come out of the recreation budget.
And is, does that have it in there?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
No, I don't think so. I mean, usually, I mean, I brought this up because I knew you were aware of it and I thought I'd like to just make sure that I was safe doing it. Items like this, I usually try not to bother the board about. And it's, you know, it's an amount under my authorization, so I can.
And is it?
But I wouldn't do it if you told me no.
Do we typically just leave it there all through the, the spring, summer, fall, or is it only during soccer season?
It's just during the soccer season. They tell me when they're going to need it by and I call the porta potty people and they bring it over. And when they're done, they tell me and I call them and they come get it.
That's funny. Is it the same? I don't know. I have no idea. Is it the same price if you leave it all in the summer or is it?
You pay by month.
Oh, you pay by month. Oh, okay.
So during February, Dee.
You're not going to do that. No, no.
No, but I think what she's thinking is, because what I was kind of going off of, maybe, but I don't know. I, that doesn't, I don't know if we've really had, have we really had a need? I don't know. That's like one of those things where you just don't, you want, I personally would want the convenience that it's there and so there's not other things happening.
Right.
And, and I don't even know, I'm surprised we don't do it a little sooner through summer.
Because of the water.
Swimming.
I've thought that we've had one at least a couple of times over at the park behind the school.
Well, and you'd almost like to put, yeah. I don't know. I was just.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing one there, but.
It's a nice thing to have. You know, that might make people use the park more, use the fields more and the playground. So it's better than having them.
Right. That's hot. That's my concern.
Being a parent that used to run up and down these soccer things, I couldn't wait for the season to be over.
So, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. I.
Well, now we're going on to the fund balance.
Yes.
I'm sure that's what you used to call it, fun.
That brings us to the fund balance.
And I think you had me put this on because you wanted to talk about, and this is the fund balance. Sorry, I didn't put it in here. It's very fun. I think it was two.
Yes, there were. I'm.
Yeah, we've gone through this.
I think it was the minimum level that you had spoken to me about of the assignment. Right now, the, the policy calls between six and ten percent. And we're, last year, which is the latest we have, it was six point two two percent. Was the percentage that we had retained for the fund balance.
And.
Would you say right now it was? I'm sorry.
Six point two two. So it's just, just at our minimum almost.
And that's one of the reasons that we've had the financial stress and strain and limitations of when we can spend stuff until taxes come in, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm also going to be talking to you tonight because I now have the MS five thirty-five, which shows that our fund balance, the end of twenty-three is in the vicinity of five hundred and seventy thousand. So, so gained is three ninety-one when the tax rate was set.
So the, that is definitely one of the things where there's different recommendations. And DRA has had recommendations, which I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think theirs was between like five and fifteen or something like that.
This is between, I think it's six and seven to seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yep. And interestingly enough, there are some towns that have no fund balance.
No fund, no fund balance.
And towns you wouldn't expect.
Wow.
And then there are also towns that have a tremendous fund balance. So, fund balance is really good for emergencies, of course, which we're experiencing this year.
Yeah, like a little water? Can't believe some towns don't even have any fund balance. So what do they do? Take a loan or something if they have a problem?
Well, if they have a problem, they have to find the money someplace. And so I would imagine they'd have to borrow.
Yeah.
Tax anticipation notices are a common thing.
Yeah, so.
We're very lucky. We're pretty frugal, so we don't have to do all that fun stuff.
I know. I took some screenshots of something that was through the state that was going to show all of the balances for stuff, but I'm not finding it right now. In short, compared to basically everybody around us, we are very low compared to most all of the other towns.
Really?
And it's one of the reasons why like when the school changes how much they need, it becomes an issue for us to pay them or we're going to have to wait until we get our taxes to pay you that last month's sort of thing. And so I think that we don't have to review this until it's time to go through the budget. But I wanted to bring it up because I think we should consider that with the DRA's shift being, like most of it is above where our suggested is, that we should probably raise our minimum level. Excuse me a moment. Be right back.
And you know, if you wanted to give a party or something, you know, you need, you need resources.
Right.
Probably call the fund balance.
I was quite surprised with that, Dee, when I, when they told me.
There's certainly people that don't, yeah.
And they said, you'd be very surprised.
Yeah, I just, yeah, because we, I mean, we have never, I've lived here, I don't know, fifty-something years. We've never had, we've always planned ahead.
I've never worked in a town that didn't have one.
Yeah, I know. That would be scary, boy. I mean, you're just, you're just gambling. And I'm not a gambler, so I only bet on things that are good.
It's kind of like when I was young and I had like a dollar I could, you know, use anyway or whatever.
Yeah.
If I was lucky.
So that would be my, my comment on that. And that's really why I brought it up. So that we can talk about and think about that minimum level. And when we're dealing with what that's used for, there's basically three ways that it gets used. One is as the cash flow for the town, well, we wait for taxes to get collected. The second is when we use something like the contingency fund. Or if a special warrant article says we want to take from the unassigned fund to do a project or, or something of that nature, so that it's quote, not from taxation. It has been taxed in the past. That's how it got there, but you'll usually say, you know, you'll usually see the lines, this not come from taxation.
Yeah.
It's, what it means is not new taxation. And the third is at the end of the year, when we're finalizing the tax rate, we can use what's in the unassigned fund to offset taxes. So that's when we put, for example, seventy-five or a hundred thousand into like, okay, we're not going to have the taxpayers take, pay that amount of tax because it's coming from the fund.
Yeah.
And that's how we drop the fund towards the lower levels.
Yeah.
And we've done that basically since the pandemic happened. We kept putting a, a large chunk each year to offset the, the tax rate. We did a smaller amount last year saying we probably wouldn't be able to keep doing it because, you know, the fund had shrunk basically to its minimum values. And this year, we, we almost had a problem because it was at its minimum values. So.
Because of the.
Because the fund had been shrunk so much.
And then we had all the.
Then we had the cash flow issues.
Yeah, with, right, okay.
So that's why I think we, we, we need to have the discussion of that minimum should probably be higher. I'm fine with aiming for, you know, whatever is a range that's not up to the maximum of what the DRA is. Because I think we are a fairly fiscally conservative town and that makes sense.
Right.
But I think it needs to be higher than what we have our minimum set at so that we don't have to, in the future, have a board that takes out TANs or has to call emergency meetings.
Because I don't think we, I don't think, I don't remember ever doing that, the TAN stuff, ever.
No. And with a healthy fund balance, you don't need to. Because you're, you're not taking out that temporary loan to get the money because we have the money.
Right, saving, it's saving money in the long run.
So.
So what do you suggest as a, I don't know, what are the other towns around? Have you looked into that?
I don't know what their percentages are. I haven't looked into it.
You want our chief here to look into some of the other towns and what they're doing?
Sure. Having more information would be good. But seeing that ours is six to ten and that we're at six point two and it was kind of a problem, and even if we went like
To five, out of eight, yeah.
Eight to twelve, so there's a range or something of that nature, that seems reasonable to me without having the actual hard numbers in front of me.
Is that of your total budget, eight to ten, twelve?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see what some of the other towns do.
Well, no, sorry, the, I'm not sure exactly how that one's.
I always have to think about how I say.
The contingency fund is based on the budget, but the.
It's based on the appropriations and so on.
Well, so what's it eight to ten percent of?
Of the appropriations, total appropriations, which includes warrant articles.
Okay, okay, okay. Kind of what I said, but a little bit.
You did.
Okay, okay, okay.
You said it.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, if we have that kind of consensus, but I think we should probably have more information for when we talk about it at budget time as opposed to trying to just make a quick change now. So.
Yeah, and I'd like to see what the other towns do too.
I will get someone right on that.
His best person.
I wonder who that would be.
Russ knows.
Or you can look on the mirror.
That's why I said his best person.
Not, not to say it should be you, but the, because it's finance stuff, you were going to take a finance course, right? Does that happen or is that soon?
I think it's in September.
Yeah, we did sign you up for that.
I have to remember the date on that.
Write it down on your calendar.
Well, it's a bunch of classes then.
Oh, really? Wow.
I haven't gotten any reminders for it yet.
It's a full like certification course for town finance.
We'll, we'll look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, because I have to talk about that.
Oh, well, we want you to go.
I want to go too.
So, all right. Any other comments, questions on it? All right. So that brings us to correspondence, which I will say the first one because I just got it this afternoon. We got the quarterly from the solar company for, that's trying to do the large project. They told us the same thing as always, except they did add, they did call out specifically that what was blocking them was waiting for the interconnection agreement from National Grid. Oh, you had it too.
Well, that was my last item because I just got it.
Okay.
So hurry up.
As I mentioned before, I had given you a copy of my amended amendment. Incorporating, so have you had a chance to look at it and make sure that I have everything in there that, and, and I'm not, I've just used the same format that it was.
For, for the town.
For the.
The transfer station.
The transfer station. One of the issues was about programs that if it was approved by one town, it could be that town's responsibility for the financing and that town would also get the benefit of any revenue that was associated with it. The day-to-day operation, and I'm not sure whether this is, this is what I'm hoping to talk to Neil about. I put responsibility of Hawkington Public Works Department. The Webster CIP will meet with the Hawkington CIP committee annually to review expected future expenditures. And I think you just said it could be just one member perhaps.
Yeah, it was discussed there that it might be joint meetings, that it might be one member sit from each sit in the others, so I'm not sure how that should work, but it should work.
CIP is talking out.
Yeah, okay. And obviously, you, you meet annually at the moment to review the annual operating budget, but ever since I've been here, it's always been difficult because it's to assume and, and I don't really, basically, they tell you what their budget is and you say.
Yeah, yeah, that, we probably need to, and maybe it is further on, but we probably need to be more specific about that because what we're doing now would satisfy that requirement. Doesn't satisfy us doing anything other than, okay, that's your final number that you're recommending to town. Thanks. We'll take that into account for our budget.
I think it would be good probably to have that department that's recommending to them what their budget request is to maybe have a representative come and talk to you.
That want, yeah, that's looking to.
Yeah, ahead of time.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, right.
So that, that probably should be added in that, that, uh, operating budget review thing.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. I don't think anything else is really different than what it was. Number six didn't seem like it should be in there to me. Because it's just saying that the select boards can act as a select board.
Well, that's fine with me. You think that it's not necessary?
Or. I guess maybe it's because of the wording, cuz I think you're trying to say that both town select boards.
Should be approved.
Must accept and can modify the annual budget and apportionment for the transfer station provided to each select board.
Yeah, I don't know if I need to put the quorum of its members to vote cuz that's kind of goes with the saying. Okay, I'll try to word that a little more sensibly. Let's see. That type of language, I think must've come from the last conference.
Um, the one about the policy change, which is number seven. Since I didn't notice it, uh, further down, it should also include fee structures or the I'm sure there's a, an appropriate term for it that I'm missing right now, but the, the fees.
I think fee structure is a good one.
What is the, we've got the list of fees that we review occasionally. What is that called?
Fee schedule.
The fee schedule, thank you. That's what it should be.
Or you wanna say fee schedule.
Fee schedule rather than structure.
The, the fee schedule for the, the transfer station.
Isn't it weird, I mean, that that, that word, it's there, you just can't bring it?
Well, it's, it's always weird because why is, why is the fees a schedule instead of just
Right.
a list, but, you know, it's okay. That's what they call it, so that's what we call it.
Well, if you said fee list, it doesn't sound as nearly as.
Schedule. Schedule to get your fee.
Okay, and I assume nine is a, is a direct holdover?
Yep.
As well as ten and eleven and twelve.
Annual population census figures, maybe since. All right.
So we're just waiting here back?
Well, my goal is to have something put together with what Hawkington was, was planning cuz you're going to meet with them on September eleventh. And so that would be, that's a Monday.
Yep. So, yeah, the, the couple minor things that we just mentioned and any other comments or thoughts on it? I think it's simple to a point, should take care of it.
That's the, the simple, keep, kiss, the kiss rule, keep it simple.
The, the thing that to me is interesting here, and I'm sure we're gonna get pushback from I don't know about their quorum of select board, but at least from some of their select board members, was, uh, we're not calling for any sort of committee to drive anything from policy or, or the like, so. We're not requesting there be a committee, that the committee should have anything to do. One other, so there's this, uh, report that Neil is supposed to be getting to us now. We should probably have something in the con- in this agreement about, maybe not that report, but some form of reporting that's happening, say quarterly.
Ongoing reporting or something like that.
And to make sure that that's given to the town administrators. So that it can be disseminated as appropriate in town.
Well, it'd be similar to reviewing the budget every other week. Yeah, something. So, now that it will be every other week, but I mean, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but that allows for in the agreement, the like, yes, you have to actually talk about this so that we do know what's going on instead of we said that it would be fine because we're expecting to have communications and then, oh, here, we need to order all of this.
Yeah.
The bill, yeah.
The basic thing is the communication cuz, you know, we've gotten this list of what was needed. We went through this by increasing the amount to put into this, and it's August and we haven't, nothing's happened.
Right.
And I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying that, you know, then the year ends and there we go.
Same vote again.
Exactly. So that's my, my comment on that. Uh, any other correspondence?
Yes, um, I pres- I presented, presented to you, um, some correspondence by Jeff Evans regarding his driveway on, um, Battle Street, which is a state road. He provided, um, his driveway permit. Basically, um,
Take over?
Yeah, why don't you explain that, Russ? You'd be better than I am.
So, Mr. Evans went to the planning board because he's not able to get his certificate of office at his house because his driveway hasn't been completed, and there's been some dispute on whether he should have to have the paved apron or not require the paved apron, and the planning board is working on that currently. And as part of that meeting, he forwarded information that he wanted shared with both the select board and the planning board. So I forwarded it to you so you can look at it, but as of right now, the planning board is currently discussing what that's gonna mean.
So I would suggest that we yield to what the planning board decides based on the fact that the state's response, uh, to him was quote, "The town of Webster and its planning board may have additional requirements for driveways constructed within its borders. And leave it up to you to navigate those requirements," end quote. So, uh, I suggest that we as a board leave it to our planning board cuz they're the ones that deal with driveways.
Okay.
Do we need a motion or anything for that or?
Okay.
No.
I need to go over.
Yes, uh, since you asked. The resident Hillsbury Lake who had complained about the chickens.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, we sent Tom down there and he only saw two chickens. Uh, they called to let me know that there were several more chickens plus the rooster.
And did they say ducks too?
And damn, what's that?
I think there were some ducks.
Uh, oh, and ducks?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was my understanding that there wasn't much we could do zoning-wise. However, if it's in their deed, we can't help them with that either. They would have to, um, what am I saying? A deed, cause dual deed.
The destruction.
Yeah.
However, the one thing that might cause a little difficulty is it is in our zoning. It is not so agricultural.
It's, it's, the zoning says no agriculture is allowed.
Oh, in the Pillsbury Lake district.
Okay.
So agriculture is not allowed. We've only had, our code enforcement officer has only observed two chickens.
Correct.
Which is not agriculture. So there's really not that much that we can do. He also mentioned in the report that it was fenced off and obscured from view, so it's not like he can go in unless they invite him. Uh, so there, really, this should be handled by the Pillsbury Lake Management HRA that they dissolved.
Yeah, right.
And so since they dissolved, all of their responsibilities boil down to their own individual residence. So it would be a residential civil matter as, as far as I'm concerned. Is there, i- is my understanding correct here? That's, that's what I've kind of heard through.
I think your understanding is correct. I think that.
Especially based on the observation.
We obviously try to help everyone with everything, and sometimes we can't, and it sounds like one of those times.
Okay.
Um, we got a letter thanking us for our donation to the, um, I think that's the CAP program.
No, asking didn't change.
We also got the amendment number one for the federal conversion and right-of-way services for the Close Pen Bridge. Did I send that to you?
I don't think I sent it.
I don't think so, cuz I think it came afterwards.
Uh, you mentioned there was a total amount too, right?
Yeah.
Oh, they gave us, they gave us a quote, Marlo?
They gave us a quote.
And, and this is just for the?
This is for, um, the services for the right-of-way acquisitions or land acquisitions plus the additional services that are required using, because we're getting federal funding for the construction.
And there's more processes.
Their contract, we had gotten, it was two six, two hundred sixty-one thousand, and we were just about at the end. So I've been asking them about what are we gonna, where are we gonna go from here? It's another hundred thousand dollars.
How do we even know what to compare that to?
For that, I don't know, the, uh, Marlo, I really don't. That's a very good question. I think we're kind of, I think we're kind of.
In a spot where we can't ask a lot.
I'm not saying that's not, doesn't make sense, but I'm saying that you, you don't have anything to compare it to unless you go to another firm and you don't wanna do that now, we don't, you know, so. But I'll send you this so you have that paperwork.
Is there part, any part the town can be part of that would help them and, you know, like, probably not, not with the.
Well, back, before it became the, before the federal funding came into place for the, um, the rightaways and so forth, the town was gonna do that and do the negotiation.
Oh, okay.
But now.
The feds make that.
That's off the table.
Okay.
And I think it's basically, um, that we don't have the expertise for that.
Right, okay. So that's, that's a thought. Okay, perfect.
You know.
Not perfect, but you know what I mean.
Uh, there's a, we do have the standard dredge and fill permit has been approved for the bridge. Uh, it is contingent upon us sending them nineteen hundred ninety dollars for the, to go into the mitigation fund, which I will ask Wendy to cut a check the next time.
Ask them if we can use the mitigation funds to, uh.
See, help elsewhere. And I guess that's really the end of our correspondence.
That's a bummer.
I know. You were having a good time, was it?
I have a good time till that change started coming in.
All right. So that brings us to public comment, and they have all left, they commented.
Quiet town out there.
They commented everything they were.
I did have one more piece of business that I said I would bring up from the planning board meeting.
Oh, yes.
Uh, there's a potential another code violation. Normally driveway issues stay at the planning board, the planning board. I've discussed this with Emmett and it was brought up by Craig at the meeting that somebody on Centennial Drive has put in an illegal driveway, and this has been mentioned to the person in it past. And it was looking like they were putting in illegal driveway. I think at this point, it's come to the level of code enforcement. So I was wondering if the board wanted me to have the officer to go out and do a review of it and have a letter prepared for the next meeting. Should you chose to sign it.
So they don't need any permit or anything to put in a driveway?
You do need a permit to put in a driveway.
But he doesn't have one, or?
But this person has consistently said that they're not putting in a driveway. They intend to put stairs down to their property and just store canoes and kayaks and have a small shed on it. But increasingly, it looks like they're building a faux lawn driveway to get out there and just not calling it a driveway. So they don't have to go through the permitting process. So at this point, this would be the second time the board would have mentioned it to this person. So I feel it's a good time to just, you know, have somebody go out, take an official look, open up a code enforcement gaze and move forward from there.
Absolutely, yeah. Cuz if you don't.
I'm gonna yield with the person on the planning board, but yeah, that sounds perfectly reasonable.
I think I know which one you're talking about.
I think we probably do.
Sounds good.
This might also be a good time for me to go over the MS five thirty-five.
Okay.
Which is the auditor's, uh, financial report of the budget. So, um, I agree with the figures that they've stated. It's always interesting to me cuz when the aud- auditors do it, the books come back differently from what you expect them to be.
I didn't see that in the package.
You didn't have it cuz I didn't have it either.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, and so if you're, I mean, you certainly can wait till next time you wanna sign this, um, on Close Pen Bridge as soon as possible because the auditors have been taking their time doing it, and we can't. That's a whole nother story. I won't get into the tax rate. Anyway, um, basically what this does, some of the categories I looked at and I said, whoa, where'd that come from? Well, this is voted appropriations, which agrees with what our voted appropriations were. And this is twenty-two we're talking about. And our actual expenditures, and when they're doing actual expenditures, they're adding everything, so in other words, they're adding, money that was spent out of the trust funds because it was spent. They're adding money that was spent out of ARPA because that was spent, and so the figures look like we've overspent the budget, but we haven't. So that's the good news. As I mentioned before, the fund balance did increase, um, by a hundred or a hundred eighty thousand in that range.
Yeah, which is, we had expected that it was increasing from that year.
Yeah, it was four ninety-seven, which is not the figure it was back in last, when we set the tax rate. I think it was three ninety-one. However, it's a moving target. Now it's five seventy-two, so, uh, that, that is the good news. So this is just a boilerplate form that the auditors fill out. I've, I've looked down it. I have no reason to think they're not accurate, and I would encourage you to sign the form. And if you have any questions, please don't ask me cuz I'm.
Which is a perfect lead-in to our, uh, signing of documents and our approval of the draft meeting minutes. Has, has anybody gotten a chance to look at our, uh, meeting, how's the minutes?
Just the one, just the top one?
Just, just the top, yeah.
There you go, kiddo.
Can I have your pen?
Yeah, I went out to borrow it too. I brought a pencil.
Well, the day I may write the minutes before the meeting ends.
How does that?
It'd be a good day. The day I type fast enough to write the meeting minutes before the meeting ends would be a good day.
Why?
You know, then I'll be a court stenographer.
You could have one of those little.
I don't know how they could ever just.
I don't, you can't really do that either.
Not me.
I couldn't type that fast and not that accurately.
It must, it must happen.
They've got like three strokes they're using. It's not typing.
I was gonna say, well.
Oh, it's more like you hit a word.
Something like that, or little, little different strokes mean different, different strokes for different quotes, I guess.
Different quotes, yes.
And looking at the minutes, it reminds me that, uh, we were gonna talk to, uh, San Souci about the. And looking at the minutes, it reminds me that, uh, we were gonna talk to San Susie about the.
I did.
Utility, what, what was just taken?
Yeah, he's, he, he says Brian Fogg is, is very qualified. And he suggested that rather than, we have eighteen towns involved in this suit. And he appreciated, I was thinking of him, of course, it's not in the contract that we have with him.
Right.
And, um, and by the time, he said it would just hold it up, we tried to do something different and I would agree with that.
Okay, sounds good. And so, if I'm remembering correctly, the way the letter was written, we didn't have to do anything if we agreed.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Perfect. All right. So.
Now, I will say one thing. I was, it was the most interesting meeting last month, because I couldn't see anybody.
Oh.
I'm glad it's not just me.
I only was listening to voices, cause I could not see the people.
Hey, you didn't remember that I was there.
Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't see. There was that spotlight and, and you looked like you were at the Spanish Inquisition.
Yeah, yeah. The lighting could be adjusted a little bit.
Anyway.
That was maybe earlier in the, in the summer.
And it's too bad, because it got, and it was a rainy night and it was dark and, uh.
I'm glad, cause I felt like I was alone, it was, you couldn't see a thing, so I felt kinda stupid, but.
And then I went to, I thought it was so smart and I brought my little, the Chromebook, well, you know, it doesn't work without the internet.
Oh, so how, yeah. So how did this look? I thought that was pretty good.
Long feather pen.
Yours was a little tiny.
Jar and some sand.
Yes, I should have had the, that's right.
Your old tiny minutes.
I think, I think it's a nice tradition to do.
But I think we should do it like at two o'clock in the afternoon or something on a Sunday or, what?
Well, they also wanna have, uh, they, they want to find a way to get internet in there and a few other things. So hopefully in the future, it will be a little more normal, even though historic.
They need some lights.
And better lighting.
And you need to dress up next time, Dave.
Oh, no, I don't really want to do that.
But, uh, yes, so.
And leaving the place, it was kinda like filled by the numbers, you know?
Oh, good thing that girl had the flashlight.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have been, doo-doo.
I just clicked the button to have my car show its lights, but, you know.
I was across.
I just rolled down the hill and probably hit my car.
There you go. I'll have to remember that.
But it was, it, I thought it, you know, meeting went well and, and, uh, we got through it.
The one thing I have to say, I thought they had a lot more stuff in there originally, so I don't know. Cause I couldn't see it, um, only when I got in the beginning.
They've done a lot of organization categorization and putting stuff into the, uh, exhibits around the walls.
Oh, okay, maybe that's.
Instead of just kind of piled places like it was before. And they also are using the, uh, portions of the fire station across the street for storage.
Oh, okay, that's probably a big thing.
Which is their next major project, is that the?
Yeah. Oh, that's just cool.
No, we take them.
Are you on the, are you on the group?
No, but they've updated us a couple times on, on things, so.
I know, I have one, okay.
Yeah.
So Dave, did you see anything that you didn't like?
Uh, I'm not gonna comment on it yet. As far as I'm concerned, it's fine. Uh, there's a couple things I wouldn't, I wouldn't have bothered calling out all of the amendments to the previous minutes, but there's no reason to get rid of them, so I'm fine with it.
I'll second.
Well, that wasn't a motion.
Oh, come on.
I was answering your question.
Well, you said fine with it.
Motion to fine with it.
Yeah, how's that?
All right, I was moving, except the, the meeting minutes is written.
I second, but I still like the motion to fine with it.
All who are fine with it.
I.
Okay.
See, Russ, there are no changes.
I know, I hate that.
Well, you did hear, "I'm fine with it."
That's only cause it's Dana.
I was gonna say.
I hate minutes.
That was just, that was funny.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna have to have.
I think you wanted to do one.
I do, but I have one thing for you to sign first.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Um, I have the, the payroll for you to sign. I have a few.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I saw.
Oh darn, her ink.
Oh, now, forty thousand.
Yeah, right, thanks, man.
Yeah.
Sorry, I write big and long.
I'm happy to inform the board about this one. Oh, that's the last land use change tax we have this year.
This is the land use change tax, here's the rest of it, they only need to sign where I've written your names there.
Oh, that's nice. I'll go to Boston. Where the heck is this, oh, white ones, rude. I'm so glad you, you print the names, you're such a wonderful person to do that.
Usually I don't, but finally, there's always confusion, so I thought.
He asked me if I'd go back and type them and I'm like, I don't even know where the original for that one is, this hasn't been a while.
He wasn't very nice to me about it.
I mean, I would if I could've, next time I'll do it in the future. Now that I know, this is something I'm supposed to be doing.
You know, there are things we said about having it typed for you.
Yes.
You know?
That's true.
That's true. I know.
Oh, I'm so tired of proofreading, plus when.
The Conservation Commission thanks them.
Right. Five pages, six pages.
Thank you. Um, then we have the comms payable warrant. We have a school payment in there. We have a GMI asphalt sixty-five hundred and gravel seventy-seven, forty-nine, if you like to look at bills.
Does this one also have the funding of our two grid funds?
We, we did that two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you said it was gonna be in the next one.
Did I? Well, I lied to you, I'm sorry.
No, I did lie.
That's what I'm trying. While we were signing.
Yeah, it, uh, yeah, we funded those and the last thing, and they've gone, trustees have deposited that back.
Perfect. Three hundred and eight thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents per month to the school system.
That is scary.
Well, lucky we don't have a lot more kids in there, we're paying a bigger one.
And that would make it so that the fund balance would be a problem for cash flow.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because we don't get that until our final tax payment at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's true. Right. I looked at, um, something I was looking at and there was, oh, was a, when my kids were in kindergarten, it wasn't public, it was private, so they made a cookbook to make some money. There were thirty kids in that kindergarten class that year. And the, the two, the two classes my kids were in, they're both about thirty kids. And I don't think that ha- has happened, I don't know what there are now.
That was all that, that was just last year.
Just Webster, yeah.
Then I have, um, this is the visa bill and I'm sorry, I don't know how to make all these bills smaller.
Why not?
But those are things, most of them are my things with the electric bill and phone bill.
Oh, you must tell us the exciting news about the electric bill.
Oh, I'm so excited, yes.
Oh, my god.
I have finally figured out how to balance what we're, our build and what we get back for the solar.
Really?
And so it agrees with what they tell me.
Well, I'm impressed.
Balance, and I should have brought you that little form, but, um, I'm gonna keep track of that. And so maybe at the end of this year, we'll have an idea of when people say, how much does this make? Can I have, do, how much does it benefit us, so.
I'm impressed, you're looking for a raise?
I am.
But we used to have that, that information off of it, cause we, we'd get checks from them.
Right.
And then they just started really messing with things, so.
I did email Mr. Button today and he's, he's responded and sent me the contract to, to sign. Electronically signed, no less, so I have to figure out how to do that.
Uh, you just, you just click the link and then go click on the spots.
Oh. That's, I should be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm sure it's DocuSign.
Yeah.
It's.
Adobe DocuSign.
Really straightforward, yeah.
And, um, we made the Bosco paper because of our community power, been in the commu- they're thinking about doing the community power, thinking. So, we've already been in it, so, yeah, little, I should send it to you, I'll just.
The, so if they're thinking about it, they should definitely reach out.
Yeah.
To Community Power Coalition, who now has set up a, like, champions of community power thing. So if a community is interested, they can kinda get assigned to a particular champion.
Already?
Which Marty has volunteered to be one.
Oh, nice. Oh, nice, okay.
So you should def- they should definitely contact the, the Community Power Coalition and they'll, they'll give them a touch.
They were saying, but they were saying that Webster's been in, been at for a while and all that stuff, so, which I thought was kinda nice.
We have been involved with it for.
Thank you to you.
Well, no, no, we, Webster has been involved since the legislation was being thought of to enable it to actually make sense. The Energy Committee, many years ago, uh, was working with and talking with Clyde Carson when he was putting the.
Oh, you and Clyde Carson, yeah?
When he was putting it together, he was, of course, the representative that was in the State House and is in Warner. And, uh, when he was putting it together, he was outlining it and telling the Energy Committee about it and what is gonna allow them to do and how the existing stuff works. So, we've, we've definitely been involved for.
Yeah, right. For a long time. Somebody to be proud, I like to be kind of in the first group.
E- even though, uh, we weren't, we weren't the first ones to enact slash adopt using community power.
No, but, but we're not at the bottom either.
Yeah.
So that's what I like.
But we definitely jumped in when, uh.
Good time.
When things started, started rolling. Do we have anything further on that?
That's all I have, do sign.
Okay.
Just a quick question on the fleece and flower bills, there's one that's dated ten twenty-six twenty-two and then one in April.
She was making up ones that, um, had somehow gotten lost. Either she hadn't sent them to us or we lost them, I'm not sure which the answer is, but we had checked back and we hadn't paid those, so we did.
Okay. And then, yeah, okay. Hey, you can keep talking, I'm just looking. Oh, and then with these weather events bills, they don't, they're not, I see one had a road on there, but it doesn't list where, what, what roads they were working on.
I think it's mostly Roby Road.
Yeah, Roby was in bad shape.
But it would be helpful to have the road listed.
Yeah. So I wondered, this FEMA has already talked about, been here to talk about that, or?
FEMA came and met with Emmett and myself and we went out to, um, two locations. We went out to Roby Road and we went out to Lake Road.
Wouldn't they have also met with, um, uh, Wlenski?
Well, yes, I'm sorry, he was here as well.
Okay.
Yeah, um, he's the emergency manager. And so Rob was very involved, thank you for reminding me. The, at that point, they were trying to determine what dollar amount our damage was. And, um, and what needed to be done and they needed to do some calculations to come up with that dollar amount. And, uh, so Emmett showed them what happened on all these items. They were supposed to, Merrimack County had to have at least six hundred thousand dollars in damage to qualify. And the state of New Hampshire overall had to have two million one hundred thousand to qualify.
So it just depends on.
And I have not heard, I have not heard that it's been declared, um, yet. And I'm not sure whether that's good or bad, I think it just takes time.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sure it takes time. I just was wondering, so, I'm sure it takes a lot of time, because.
And I'm of the opinion, I mean, in my experience in the past, it's been a couple of years where you get the money.
Holy, a couple of years?
You know, so in other words, it's not, you think of it, gee, it's great, they come in and they, they.
It's not this year's, gonna help this year, yeah.
Although someone told me they do, they've heard it going faster, so I'll be optimistic and say, yep.
It would be wonderful for them to take care of it this year, but.
Yes.
It would be great, cause we certainly could.
Bigger fish.
Um, I have met with Emmett regarding his budget, so we're, we're, we're working through that. And, uh, I think that hopefully we'll be able to not have to do any further action.
Have, um, I mean, he's not here now, but, uh, has, do you know if there's been any decision about what is going to be done or not get done as a result of budgeting?
I think I'll have him tell you.
Okay.
Because he didn't really give me a list of what was not gonna get done, but he did tell me the things that would be, that will affect trust funds.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, I believe you said you had another.
I would like to have a non-public session, um, under legal, so I'm not sure what number that is, but you would put that in, Russ.
Yeah.
Ninety-one A, section two, E maybe?
And we're gonna go in at eight thirty-seven and we gotta make the motion.
So, I'm. Yeah, there is one through legal.
There is.
I was thinking, there's, there's one through legal where you don't have a meeting as well, but that's different.
Yeah, if you were meeting with your attorney, you wouldn't need to.
So I would move that at eight, uh, thirty-eight, uh, we would enter into non-public for discussion of legal advice.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'll have to get up, I guess, go up the door.
Lock those doors.
And then go shut that window.
Shut the windows so nobody hears us, top secret.